A committee. May the 13th, Wednesday, 2015, an historic day. I'm joined by our committee members, Paul Krikorian, co-chair, council member Jose Wezar, council member Nury Martinez, council member Herb Wesson, council member Paul Corretz, and I think we will be joined by Councilman Sadio momentarily. Mr. Clerk, what is the first order of business?
Item number one is a CLA and CAO joint report and city attorney tour report on a range of options for consideration in crafting a minimum wage proposal and ordinance.
Thank you. Again, I want to thank you all for being with us today to join in this special meeting as we continue a critical discussion on what I believe is the civil rights issue of our time. For more than seven months now, we've been studying and debating the issue of raising pay for hard-working men and women in Los Angeles who, more than ever, cannot sustain themselves or their families on the current minimum wage. Study after study has told us that closing the gap between what people earn and the cost of living isn't just our moral imperative, it's good, sound economic policy. And one of the several tools we need to be using to address poverty is raising the minimum wage. Because our city cannot thrive if more than a million of its residents are living in poverty. And we cannot have a robust local economy with successful small businesses that benefit from a solid local customer base if more than a third of Angelenos can't afford a decent place to live. This is about bringing equity to our city and ensuring that all families, that families in all parts of our city, from all backgrounds, can survive and thrive in Los Angeles. The momentum on this issue has been building, with cities all across the country moving to increase their minimum wages to address growing income disparities. We've seen proposals at the federal level, the state level, and even the county of Los Angeles are looking for ways to boost wages in surrounding communities. Even private businesses have adopted this trend, citing the reduction of employee turnover and training costs as financial motivators for their moves to raise base pay for workers. We know that Los Angeles has always led the nation on progressive change, which is why today we will discuss the options before us as we look to enact the best minimum wage policy possible for our city. You will hear from our chief legislative analyst about the studies we've commissioned and the feedback we've received from residents, stakeholders, business owners, and our colleagues on this issue. I'd like to allow the CLA's office to present their report, followed by our questions, then we'll take public comment. We'll recess for a closed session as per our agenda, and then we will come back with some specific recommendations. Before we call the CLA up, however, I'd like to give my colleagues a chance to make some opening remarks if they choose to do so. All right, well, let's, without further objections, let's proceed, and let's ask the CLA to the table.
The item before you is a report that you requested our office to prepare relative to policy elements that should be considered as part of a citywide minimum wage proposal if the council wishes to move forward with one. This has been under evaluation since October of last year. As a result of a series of meetings, this committee instructed us to conduct peer reviews of the proposal and also studies of the proposals themselves and the impact of those proposals. So at the meeting of the Economic Development Committee last week, you instructed our office to prepare options as part of the minimum wage proposal. The report before you dated May 12th has a series of policy elements that could be considered as part of the policy, and we're prepared to walk you through some of the considerations, but primarily they are targeting the areas of what the rate would be, CPI indexing, perhaps exemptions or different schedules for small business or nonprofits, as well as addressing youth wages, exemptions for hardship, as well as compensated time and compensated time off. So we're prepared to walk you through that. If you allow us just a moment, Mr. Wickham of our office will go through those elements.
Thank you, Mr. Wickham.
Good afternoon, John Wickham with the CLA's office. So we went through each of the three economic studies that were prepared, we went through the peer review, we went through the public testimony, and we identified the key policy elements that would likely be included in a minimum wage ordinance and a law. We also used as reference the hotel minimum wage law that was passed earlier by the council for some guidance as well. So the primary component of this is a wage schedule. We have the two proposals, one by the mayor and then the addendum by the council that were on the proposal that were already in motions before you. And then we identified that there could be many ways to structure a wage schedule, and it could be infinite number of ways. It's just a matter of how the council chooses to prioritize those elements at the time that you want to reach a certain rate. One of the key issues that was raised was the concept of indexing, once you achieve that target rate at a certain time, and whether the rates would be automatically increased by an index of some sort. The most logical model that had been put forward, at least was analyzed by UC Berkeley, was the CPIW for the Los Angeles, Orange and Riverside County metropolitan area. There were a number of discussions of, the council in the motions and the various letters had requested that we look at special business groups and components of the economy to see if there were, would be extra impacts or concerns with those areas. Those in particular were small business, nonprofits. In the peer review, the concept of concerns for new businesses also rose. And so we pulled each of the components out for those. The question again is whether they would receive an alternative rate schedule or not, and if they are to receive an alternative rate schedule, what would that rate schedule be? Would that rate schedule match up with the primary rate schedule that you adopt? And if so, how would those match at some given point? Then there were also some concerns for youth wage and training wages as well. As noted in the Berkeley report, there are some concepts in state law that deal with that that could be incorporated into a policy adopted by the city. We saw that in the hotel minimum wage policy or law that was adopted by council, there is a hardship provision, so that if a business is encountering severe concerns, that they can find, they can appeal for a one-year waiver of that. And so we wanted to put that before you as a policy option as well. In addition, the hotel living wage law and comments that were submitted on the record address the concept of compensated and uncompensated time off. So we brought that policy, that law component into this policy document for your review as well. Finally, a couple other things. The evaluation of effects. We saw that all three of the studies urged you to evaluate the effects of this if it goes, if it is passed. The peer review also asked that you do that as well. So that's a very critical component. And what we've been seeing, we don't, in our policy document, actually put a lot of detail about methodologies or formulas or data sources for a very specific reason. We've been finding and talking to all of the economists that they're thinking on how best to monitor this is changing. And each conversation leads to a further set of conversations. It's a very dynamic conversation that's going on among economists at this point, let alone among everyone else. And so we've suggested that you give some direction to staff to work with economists that we've been talking to, to come back with some details on how to put that together in a meaningful way. The wage enforcement issue is being dealt with on a separate track. Your committee dealt with that on the 5th. That will be in Budget and Finance Committee soon, and there'll be some further action there. And then there are a lot of smaller components to this that need to be addressed, such as what, you know, who, which department or office is going to be managing this program for you. There will need to be some questions about staffing. They will need some staffing in order to implement this. There should be a description exactly of what they're doing, the full scope of their work. Will they be doing outreach and education? Will they be doing, will they be coordinating with public interest groups, the Chamber of Commerce, et cetera? There should be notices that need to be posted in a timely manner. These kinds of technical details that need to be incorporated into your policy. Several of the report studies suggested that the council look at employer assistance and employee assistance to help businesses transition into this new program. And then, so that's in a nutshell, the types of issues that we've outlined in our report, and happy to answer any questions you might have.
And just to touch on a couple of things that John said with regard to this change and how we might review this and evaluate this later on, it's, what's interesting is the economists that we actually hired are actually talking to each other. And that's kind of what may be leading to a change in thinking and how we would evaluate this should a policy move forward. On page six of our report is actually a potential variations of the rate schedule. There are many other iterations possible, of course. And with regard to the enforcement, Mr. Krikorian can comment on this, but yesterday in Budget Committee, there has been money set aside in the upcoming budget to begin the staffing of an enforcement office.
Members, any questions? Any further questions? Again, we appreciate the work of the CLA. You've provided us with a good background of information, and you've helped us to organize it. It's been very voluminous, the testimony, the hearings, the reports, and we appreciate the role you've played in helping to organize, helping us organize our thoughts and our process along this way. Vice Chair.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I just want to echo your thoughts about the work of the CLA. This report that's before us really demonstrates, I think, the complexity of the policymaking in this area. It's not as simple as saying a number and a date. There are so many other ramifications that come from that, and I think that the CLA's work in preparing this report, combined with the work that three different groups of economists, plus the peer review, plus this committee's extensive hearings in this, have really, we've really tried to work through the details of how to make a policy that's sustainable and that achieves the result that we want to achieve. So I just wanted to really thank the CLA for this report as a blueprint for the sort of things that we still need to grapple with. On enforcement, I do just want to make the point, for those who weren't here for the Budget and Finance meetings, that Budget and Finance will be recommending to the council an appropriation of $500,000 and five positions to do wage enforcement, starting right now, wage theft enforcement, regardless of what we do on minimum wage. That will move forward, and there will be a wage theft vehicle within the city starting this year, right now, regardless of this policy. And then on the check-in and analysis that you talked about, this is, it's going to be a very difficult model to create to assess benefits and detriments. And that's why I think the economists are struggling to come up with ways that they can do that. But I think that just reinforces the importance of doing so, by whatever measure we use. It is going to be critically important for the council to continue to monitor results, make sure that we're helping to lift people up without causing harm to the very people that we're trying to help and running businesses and jobs out of the city.
Thank you. Members, any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to get clear, and I'm not sure the CLA or some of the other reports touched on this, but with respect to our hotel living wage ordinance that we passed, how do they correlate with each other, should we move in this direction? We haven't really decided, you know, what direction we may move, but nonetheless, with respect to some larger categories such as indexing or, you know, which categories fall within the hotel living wage and may or may not fall into this, how does that correlate? And does one supersede the other? How will they work together if we move in that direction?
So we actually did look at that, and the hotel minimum wage as it stands right now is quite a bit further ahead in terms of the rate. John did an analysis, and even with CPI adjustments, they will never match up. So at some point, if there is a determination to move forward with a citywide minimum wage, there'll have to be something done to address that disparity between those two policies, and also with regard to the city's living wage ordinance as well.
Okay. And so there will be disparities with respect to the indexing. Anything, any other major issues that, or areas that we should be aware of to look at?
It's primarily the rate. I mean, the hourly rate, because even if you, they're all indexed, almost the same, I believe, based on CPI. So if we start at a different number now, we can't catch up to the hotel rate ever. So there needs to be something done to either match them up, if that is the desire. There may be, we may have to do that, because if you have a citywide minimum wage, now you have a separate hotel wage that is higher. We may have to look at that unless there is something done to match those two up at some point.
Okay. Is there anything in conflict with each other that you found? There are policy issues that they're discretionary, whether we agree or not agree to have two separate rates, et cetera, but is there anything that may be in conflict with each other if we adopt a citywide?
Well, the hotel, and John can correct me, but I think that the hotel rate actually that goes into effect on July 1st is around 1537 or something like that. And if the city were to move forward with a citywide minimum wage, that's different than that, we're going to have to reconcile that difference.
And that's, and what I'm trying to get at is, is there a legal issue involved where there's a difference? Or is it just a policy issue where we're, let's say we say there is a difference and we're going to leave it alone, or there's a difference, but we want to correct it, not because of legal issues, because we want to? I mean, there's, is it a legal issue or is it a policy?
I think we would ask the city attorney to step up and answer that question. We haven't broached that with them yet, so perhaps they can comment.
Should we do it in closed session or doesn't matter?
We can answer this question in open session. We do believe the question is a policy question, because the council has already articulated a rational basis to distinguish hotels from other businesses due to the amount of public resources the city spends on tourism. So you could keep the rates different, and the hotels could be higher as a result of that prior finding. Or as a policy consideration, you might decide you want to, at some point, link the rates so they go forward on the same track.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman, with respect to total compensation, I have a number of issues, but I understand, is that covered under closed session, or will we be purviewed to talk about that here? I'm not quite sure what's appropriate.
We touch on total compensation a little bit in our report.
Yeah.
We indicate that the city attorney has told us that total compensation is not something that we can do here in the state of California. Any further discussion on that should be held in closed session.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other questions, members? I see we've been joined by Councilman Sadio.
Yes, sir.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, if there are no other comments, members, let's go to public comment, our favorite part of the hearing. And thank you again, CLA, for your combined efforts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I also want to mention that the CAO was kind of our partner in this as well.
Yes, he is. Thank you, Mr. CAO. You're somewhere. Thought I saw him. Okay, we're going to take public comments. We have a large stack, so we're going to ask everyone to keep your comments to one minute. We appreciate your interest, your enthusiasm, and your ideas, and we want to hear them all. Good place to hear it. All right, so if I can invite up to the podium Brenda Smith, Stuart Waldman, Ruben Gonzalez, John Howland, Matt Sutton, Adina Tesler, Dustin Batten, and Laura Peralta. Not necessarily in that order.
Good afternoon, good evening to everyone. My name is Brenda Smith, and I'm here on the behalf of LTCW. My fight is, we have, we work for the economy. All we want is the $15. We don't want it 2019. We want it now. We work hard. The economy is not keeping up with the wages that we're making. Milk is almost $4 a gallon. Eggs, $4. And we're making $9.65. I'm a mother of eight, and I have four children that would love to attend college. Making $15 an hour would make the difference. So I'm here on behalf of supporting the fight for $15. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stuart Waldman, President of the Valley Industry and Commerce Association, VICA. I want to thank you for having all the hearings and all the studies and making this a fair and open process for the most part. In terms of addressing issues, we are looking at small businesses. We are really concerned that small businesses, and I want to thank Councilmember Krikorian for what he's put out there. Slow and steady is really the way to go. Some of the proposals that have been out there with the $1.75, $1.50, $25 increase are quite a bit for a small business and a nonprofit handle over a short period of time. So we're looking at sort of a long period of time for implementation, something every year, but not something large. We're also concerned with the CPI. When you tie future raises to the CPI, you are not giving anyone the opportunity to look at the situation in the economy as it stands. We prefer that the power be kept with the city council to make future decisions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm John Howland with the Central City Association. CCA was the first business group to come out in favor of the mayor's proposal of 1325 an hour, but we did so with several stringent conditions. Foremost among those was slowing down the phase-in so that we don't have any losers, those people who will lose their jobs due to these increases being too great and doing them too quickly. We support the proposal we've heard about from Councilmember Krikorian to slow down the implementation for a more reasonable speed for small businesses. Los Angeles is a very different city from the other cities that have implemented a new minimum wage. It's dramatically different because this wage is dramatically bigger and is dramatically faster than what's been done elsewhere. Our wage starts lower, and our unemployment level is significantly higher, our education attainment is lower, our population is larger, and LA is surrounded by a number of businesses and cities, a number of cities that are trying to steal our businesses. So listen to the restaurant owners, listen to the small business owners, listen to the business owners, slow down this way.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, Ruben Gonzalez, LA Area Chamber of Commerce, one minute, so I'll discuss only one issue, the idea of tying indexing the wage to CPIW. During the, and I've said this before, during the five years of the Great Recession, CPIW went up four out of those five years. That means that if this proposal was in place at that time, businesses that were barely keeping their doors open, struggling to not fire employees, would have had to raise their labor costs every year by several percentage. You can't tie our wage increases to a runaway train without anyone to steer it. It's not only what we prefer, it's the responsibility of our elected officials to have the discussion, to have the hearings, to have the studies, anytime you want to raise wages. Don't turn away from that, it's your job. And we can't have a situation where you have an algorithm deciding what the wage increase is, and it has no way of stopping, no way of changing, no way of taking into account variables that are beyond its control and beyond its scope. So please, do not index the wage. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, council members. My name is Matt Sutton, I'm with the California Restaurant Association. We are made up generally of small, independent, community-based restaurants. You've all been very thoughtful with your time, and we appreciate it. We have two main issues, and I think the number one issue is the issue of the total compensation pitch, which I know you'll be discussing. We've consistently proposed that if you have a highly compensated tip server that earns $15, that's the state minimum wage, plus $6 in tips per hour, and we've tested this at every price point type of restaurant and feel that that can be done. And we think that that would be a good way to help free up labor dollars for an operator to dedicate to those employees that are above minimum wage but don't generally share in tips. The second issue is the teen wage issue, and as I've said before, California has six of the worst teen employment regions in the nation. Two of them happen to be where we have the highest minimum wages. And so to the extent we're doing super minimum wages, we do tend to exacerbate that teen employment problem. And then finally, I'd just point out that you have a laboratory up north in Oakland. They jumped 3.25 an hour for the minimum wage, and they're starting to see some pretty dramatic negative impacts. And now a statewide minimum wage initiative has been filed for the 2016 ballot for $15.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, committee members. My name is Dustin Batten, I represent BizFed, the Los Angeles County Business Federation, representing 88,000 employers in the city of Los Angeles. There are four main points of the current proposal that we take issue with. The first one is we request the removal of the automatic CPI adjustment from any minimum wage increase ordinance. Number two, allow a different pay scale for teenage workers so that they aren't locked out of their jobs. Number three, to enact a longer phase-in period for employers with 100 employees or less, so they have time to adjust and protect their jobs. And finally, count total compensation and minimum wage calculations. We are aware that this is a state legislative issue, and we are requesting that the LA City Council to actively call for and support such legislation. Again, the LA County Business Federation opposes the minimum wage increase as it currently stands. Thank you.
Okay, good afternoon, members of the committee. Thank you for having me. My name is Laura Peralta. I'm the Director of Local Government Relations with California Grocers Association. What we're asking the committee to consider is to include healthcare pension and other benefits in determining a total wage compensation package. We're asking for you to allow longer phase-in for an increase to the minimum wage to provide local businesses time to adapt to the increased labor costs. We are asking you to implement a stepped wage increase rather than increases tied to the CPI, as was discussed before by my colleagues, also an exemption for younger workers, and to especially address a difference in pay for employees who operate and work in locations at a grocery store that are both inside and outside the city, since a lot of times our employees rotate from one store and bounce around from one store to the other. So that's what we're asking for. We ask that you consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your comments.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Adina Tesler, and I represent the California Restaurant Association here in Los Angeles. We've met with many of you over the last six months, and we've tried to be a positive part of a solution for the city on raising the minimum wage. We do believe that there's ways that we can do this and work together and not hurt the business community and the restaurants here. One of the things recommended by your recent peer review was data collection, and how important it is to have data collection start before you implement anything, so that you have a benchmark, and real-time data collection, not the census, really knowing how many employees are making how much for how many hours. And then you know when you increase the wage, how many jobs are being lost, how many hours are being taken away, or perhaps it's getting better. But right now, we have no data collection, we have no real-time data. And I'd like to ask you all how you plan on doing that before you implement anything, so that we can go back and look at how it's impacting the city, the workers, and the businesses before we hurt anybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. President.
You know, I just wanted to chime in for one second and indicate that I'm very, this committee's very appreciative of all of the interaction that we've had with the business community, and we've taken a lot of your current... business community and we've taken a lot of your current concerns into consideration. But we just had, I don't know, six or seven people, other than the first young lady, representing business and saying we need to look at this and look at that, but not one individual said we need to look at the workers. So if we're going to do this, we need to do it, we need to do it in a balanced approach. And those of you that know me, that should be part of, that is part of the equation. I'm not saying that I'm going to, that they get everything that they want, but if that's not factored in, it's not a balanced approach at looking at the issue. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, next speakers, please. Milton Moritz, Wendy Butts, Mark Loranger, Loranger, Tim McCoster, Nicole Shanidian, Jose Lusana, Miguel Lugo and Ricardo Paco. Apologies for botched pronunciations.
You got my name right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Milton Moritz, I'm the President of the National Association of Theater Owners of California Nevada. I've had the pleasure of meeting with many of you and your staffs over these last six months. We represent 27 motion picture theaters in the city of Los Angeles. Movie theaters operate on a slim profit margins, hire primarily part-time and temporary high school and college-age employees, and as a result, have an average turnover at theaters anywhere from 100% to 150% a year. Our theaters invest significantly and financially into resources for each and every new employee. This investment only starts to pay off for the theater once the employee has worked for the theater for several months. We believe that trained employees who are reliable and stay on the job for extended period of time are well worth the proposed increased wage. All we are asking for is a training wage exemption for the period of time when a new hire is still learning the basis of the job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Mark Loranger with Chrysalis. I'm here with my partners from Homeboy and from the LA Conservation Corps to talk about balance, just as President West has mentioned. We help men and women get out of poverty through jobs, and a living wage is a key part of that. So we are fully in support of the mayor's proposal. What we're asking for, however, is your special consideration for the small parts of our programs that provide transitional training jobs for a subset of the amendment women that we provide services to. At Chrysalis, we help the formerly homeless get back on their feet through employment. I don't have to tell you about the problems we're having with homelessness in LA, particularly based on the data that we saw on Monday. If we are forced to pay the higher wage for every participant in our program, that's a $2 million hit to my organization. I'm a good fundraiser, but I'm not that good. So I ask for your assistance and special consideration to help programs like ours. Thanks for your time and your consideration.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, committee members. I'm here again to request your support of a full exemption, but time-bound exemption for transitional jobs, program participants at the LA Conservation Corps. In terms of service delivery, we estimate that with each increase, Corps members and students served will decrease by 10% to 15%. That means that instead of serving 400 youth like we are today, we'd be serving about 350. By 2019, we're looking at a reduction in participants and Corps members served of 33% to 50%. So just as I shared last time, that means that the annual number of participants served would decrease by as many as 300 to 400 each year. That's 300 to 400 young people with very few places to turn for a high school diploma, work experience and the supports they'll need to be successful in their lives. Please consider carefully our request for a full but time-bound exemption from the minimum wage increases and consideration of the costs of the added services we provide to our participants. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, committee members. My name is Jose Alzun. I'm Director of Employment Services with Homeboy Industries. My two colleagues before me said a lot of stuff that I was going to say, so I just wanted to throw a couple of real numbers out to you. We're currently serving 170 people, community members, through our training program, through our 18-month paid training program. If we're not given a full exemption under this ordinance, if it happens, we would have to lay off 73 of those immediately. So that'd be 73 people that we will not be able to serve in the way that we do. This includes not just financial assistance through payroll, but also free therapeutic services, job skills training, and just a sense of community that we have at Homeboy Industries. So in considering this, we would like to ask for a full exemption for our 18-month transitional training program only at Homeboy Industries. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Miguel Lugo. I'm part of the 18-month program. Now, I'd like to ask you guys for the exception so I could keep my job and I could stay there. I just got out of prison after doing 18 years. They took me in, they're showing me back into society, they're helping me with therapy, tattoo removal, with everything I need there so I could get back, get back into my house and I could be a provider to my kids, to my wife. So I would like to ask you guys to take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Ricardo Paco. I'm also in the 18-month program at Homeboys. Personally enrolled in anger management parenting and a number of other classes of substance abuse. I'm also enrolled in college, something that they pushed for me to do, and I wouldn't have done it without them. I'm actually also asking for an exception from the raise of minimum wage so I could keep my job and continue what I'm doing. In the long run, it'll benefit me and my children, a few dollars more an hour. I mean, I'm sorry, I got nervous. In the long run, it'll benefit me and my children, more than a few dollars more an hour. Thank you.
Tim McCoster, Glazer Wile, I represent a group of restaurants. And with all due respect, I would say when folks do come forward to you and talk about alternative schedules, they are talking about the workers. They're talking about ways to maintain the business and to have schedules remain as long as they are and to be able to keep the front of the house and the back of the house fully employed. I want to speak very specifically about one minor issue, one very important issue in the restaurant industry, and I've written to you on it a couple of times, and we've heard very obliquely that the city attorney has opined that you cannot give any credit for tips. What I want to tell you is that you already have a number of alternative models. You're considering the youth and at-risk, you're considering new businesses, you're considering nonprofits and hardship models, all of where you'll either ratchet it up over a different period of time or have different amounts in the case of youth. You already do it at the airport with the living wage, where you have different rates depending upon what the benefits are, and of course, you're already doing it with hotels. What I'm here to urge you to do is to be, ask your city attorney to be creative, be creative yourself, because 351 says the employer cannot take credit for those dollars, but you can create categories where high-wage or high-earning employees are not, are in a different category than the low-earning employees. Because if you are going to have this be blanket for front of house and back of house and hotel, what you're choosing to do is to put employers in a position where people in back of house get laid off. Ask your city attorney whether or not you can create categories, because you know you can.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Nicole Shanidian with the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber would like to thank this committee for its continued dialogue on this important issue, and to Councilmember Krikorian for putting together a thoughtful proposal that addresses many of the chamber's concerns. The Chamber supports the general schedule and approach set forth by the Krikorian proposal. We are pleased to see a recommendation for a two-track phase-in approach for larger and smaller businesses, as well as the overall extended timeframe for full implementation, with small businesses reaching 1525 by 2020. We believe such an approach will go a long way to help businesses better prepare for the increased costs associated with the significant raise in wages and help keep their workers employed. The Chamber is concerned, however, that the 50-employee or less threshold is too low. In Hollywood, we have businesses like Amoeba Records who have 240 employees, but whose business model is in direct competition with the internet, so they don't have the flexibility to raise wages in the same area that others do, or else they'll lose all of their customers to the internet. And we also stand with our workers, with our restaurants on the overall compensation model. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Etchere, Yasmin Sarmandi, Nancy Berlin, Rabbi Klein, Leslie Gersoff, Gersukov, Tim McDaniels, Gerald, Jeremy Blasi, Nick Pessinkas.
Good afternoon. My name is Mark Etcheverry. I'm the Chief Financial Officer and one of the fourth-generation owner-operators of the Musso and Frank Grill in Hollywood. And we've had the unbelievable pleasure of serving this community for over 95 years. And a lot of the employees that work with us have been working with us for 20, 30, 40. The longest-tenured employee just retired at 55 years of tenure. These guys are like my family. And if this minimum wage proposal goes through as proposed, I would be forced to have to cut down on my dayparts, meaning cut down on lunch, because lunch just doesn't turn in the revenue that we would need to sustain the increase in minimum wage, which would be a result of losing 30% to 50% of our workforce. And these guys are my family. And so I strongly, strongly ask the city council, the committee, the city attorney's office to look at other options so that we don't have to be forced to make that decision. So, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Nancy Berlin. I'm Policy Director of California Association of Nonprofits, representing California's nonprofits and the communities that we serve. We have almost 10,000 organizational members statewide. We are in a unique position being both employers and local groups entrusted to reflect our community's values. So that's why we surveyed our members in November of 2014. What we found is that 70% of them increase, support increases to the minimum wage, and close to 60% do not support any permanent exemptions for any groups. We know that an increase in the minimum wage could create a temporary hardship for some service providers, but the long-term benefits to our workers and our communities and our innovative problem-solving spirit will enable us to overcome those issues. We don't want to create a low-wage sector of nonprofit workers. That's not good for any of us. And that's why California Association of Nonprofits supports raising the minimum wage for all workers.
Hi, I'm Rabbi Jonathan Klein with Clue. I'm not here to tell you that poverty wages mean hard choices between rent and food. That is what workers here will tell you and remind you. I'm not here to tell you that job loss numbers that used to be discussed, now we're talking about stopping CPI, that these things, the research has shown that it is good. I'm not here to tell you that. I'm not even here to tell you that income disparity is a scourge with collateral damage to our democracy, to our core values and to every faith tradition known in the history of humanity. No, that is not what, all of us know that already. No, I am here to tell you, all of you are smart, capable, competent leaders of this city with skills and talent. And I ask that you use more than all the very convincing data to make your decision. Move from the head to your heart. To flip what Mr. Price said, affirming the core position, it's not just sound economic policy, it's the moral imperative.
Good afternoon, I'm Yasmin Sarmandi. I'm the General Partner and Operator of Church and State Restaurant. We've heard from some people who represent organizations that represent restaurants. I am the restaurant. And I'm here to say that I absolutely support a fair and livable wage for everyone. However, if this wage is not implemented in such a way that allows businesses such as mine to survive, you're putting 55 employees out of business. It will be harder for them to sustain the time that they have to find another job than it will be for them to take the time to have this wage be implemented in such a way that allows businesses to keep their employees and keep running. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Nick Sinakis. I've worked in the restaurant industry for over eight years specializing in fine dining from New York City to Los Angeles and most recently on Melrose Avenue. I'm a victim of wage theft. The restaurant industry is a billion-dollar industry, and yet they pay us poverty wages claiming they can't afford to pay more. Servers are 100% reliant on tips that are not guaranteed or sufficient. Wealthy employers use scare tactics, money and power to intimidate their employees. My owners were taking my hard-earned tips from a night's work when I would often stand eight hours without a break or a meal. I was countlessly told if I did not like it to quit by these same employers that were stealing my tips and breaking the law. From the outside looking in, you would never know that this was happening at an affluent Melrose location. The restaurant was busy and profitable, but yet my wages did not reflect this. The owner, who was taking tips, not only tips, but the most tips each and every night, even had the audacity to show up with his new car that he has just purchased. And then when I went to the Labor Board, sued me personally. I would like to instate all workers to get $15.00 an hour with enforcement.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Jeremy Blazy. I'm a Staff Attorney with Unite Here Local 11. I, along with 23 other attorneys who include law professors and other noted experts on California law, have submitted a letter explaining why we believe that an alternative minimum wage for tipped workers would be unlawful under the state labor code. As reviewed in our letter, every neutral analyst who has been charged with looking at this issue has reached the same conclusion. This includes Judge Stephen Brick of the Alameda Superior Court, the City Attorney of Berkeley, and the City Attorney of San Diego. Indeed, the only attorneys who have taken the opposite position are those who have been hired by the restaurant lobby to expound that view. We are confident, especially in light of the CLA's comments earlier this afternoon, that our own city attorney will concur that in concluding that the city takes on significant risk that the legislation will be struck down by the courts if it includes the special carve-out for tipped employees that restaurant owners are requesting through the so-called total compensation proposal. Thank you very much.
I'd like to start off by just saying thank you guys for this hard work that you guys are doing. It's definitely apparent. And my name is Tim McDaniel Jr. I'm a proud member of ACE in the Watts Neighborhood Council. Today, I'd like to share my support in raising the minimum wage to $15.00 in a quarter as soon as possible, including the consumer protection to ensure its legitimacy. Doing this is the right thing to do. This year is the 50th year since the historic Watts Rebellion of 1965, and we have been working tirelessly to stabilize conditions through improved community coordination, to restore dignity in our Watts community. And economic development initiatives like the raising the wage to 1525 is one I feel that definitely improved conditions. I'm here to advocate on behalf of the over 40,000 stakeholders of Watts for a fair wage and to effectively reduce the financial vulnerabilities within our households. Over 60% of households in my neighborhood lives on public subsidies like food stamps and public subsidized housing. And I feel like this is a step in the right direction to support the hard work that we've been doing in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm Leslie Gersukov. I'm the Executive Director of the Jewish Labor Committee, Western Region, and I'm here today standing with Clue, asking you to take the moral road. I'm also wearing orange in continued solidarity with our sisters who fasted for 15 long days for 15 an hour. So you today are the chosen people. We are dependent on your leadership to get us through this moral crevasse that we're all facing. People cannot wait any longer for 1525 an hour, for protections against wage theft, and for paid sick days for protections against our own inhumanity. So we trust that you will lead us through the water's part only once, and we're right behind you. Thank you.
Okay, Martha Munoz, Rachel Atwood, Calvin Retana, King Chung, Orsi Griesabel, and Jolie Katz, Kenneth Spencer and Patsy Howard.
Muy buenas tardes a todos. Yo tengo un pequeño negocio y como podrán ver, hay diferencia de pequeños negocios.
Hello, council. I'm here to let you know that I have a small business and want to let you know that there is a difference within small businesses.
En mi pequeño negocio, me siento con mis trabajadores a desayunar junto con ellos antes de iniciar una jornada de trabajo. Quisiera saber quién es... antes de iniciar una jornada de trabajo. Quisiera saber quién es esta pobre gente que piensa que va a perder su negocio. Lo ha hecho alguna vez.
And I sit down and have breakfast with my employees. And I'm curious to know how many of the business leaders that are here do that with their own workers.
Todo mundo piensa que va a perder algo porque tienen la mano metida en el bolsillo. Yo creo que no pierdo nada porque la tengo en el corazón.
A lot of people are here talking about what they feel is going to happen with this policy because they have their hand in their pocket. But I like to think I'm different because I'm speaking with my hand and my heart.
En la reunión que hubo en el Museo de Tolerancia, se mencionó que una talla no nos queda a todos, y eso es muy cierto.
At the regional hearing that took place at the Museum of Tolerance, they mentioned that everyone is different. And that's very, one size does not fit all, and that's very true.
Y la diferencia de eso es que la clase trabajadora tiene una talla tan pequeña que ya no le alcanza a cubrir ni siquiera un lugar donde vivir menos una forma de alimentar a sus familias dignamente.
And it doesn't fit all because there's workers who cannot even afford to pay for rent or food.
Yo estoy aquí para apoyar el aumento al salario de 15, 25 ahora porque la gente lo necesita hoy, no dentro de 10 años.
So I'm here to support 1525 as soon as possible, not in 10 years, because people need it.
Thank you.
My name is Rachel Atwood.
Okay, try it again.
My name is Rachel. I am a restaurant worker, and I support $15 with enforcement. Raising the minimum wage would change my life. I could pay my student loans on time, my medical bills, and I could move out on my own. That's why I am here on my single day off this week. I'm a bussler, and I used to be a cook, meaning I've worked both front-of-house and back-of-house. So I have experienced how tips do not equal a living wage for either side. Employers shouldn't be pitting us against each other in this argument. Please don't exclude restaurant workers from the minimum wage. Leaving us out would defeat the purpose of this policy because we are LA's working poor. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Calvin Retana. I have been a restaurant worker within Los Angeles for the past seven years. And I'm here to support 15 and enforcement because I am a victim of wage theft. I currently work at a sushi restaurant in West LA. And when I first started working there, they were paying me $30 a shift. Each shift ranges anywhere between six to seven hours. So that's less than minimum wage. Part of the reason as to why they were doing this, aside from, I don't know, them profiting more, was because they assumed I would make up my lost wages in tips. I didn't. And even when I was finally able to get paid correctly $9 an hour, I'm still only scraping by. You see, this is a form or a practice of counting tips against wages, and it already happens within the restaurant industry and other industries such as car washes and nail salons. And this practice should not be validated by law. This is a form of wage theft. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is King Chung. I'm a retired supervisor in the California State Labor Commissioner's Office. I worked there for 25 years, enforcing the California's wage and hour laws, excluding low-wage industries such as garment manufacturing and the restaurant industry. My experience is that I find that there have been high-level or wage violations in the restaurant industry. And recently, the federal government, Department of Labor has done a study and found there's 84% violation rate. So putting in a complicated pay structure will just encourage more wage theft. And therefore, I support a simple and effective $15 minimum wage rate. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairman Price and committee members. My name is Patsy Howard, and I'm the Co-Executive Director of the L.A. Black Workers Center. It's an economic justice organization based in South LA. We applaud you for your support for an Office of Labor standards that will enforce the minimum wage. But please understand that those employers who steal workers' wages are the same employers who will not hire them because of their skin color, gender, or sexual orientation. We understand that the city's investing $200 billion in the law enforcement's budget, 100 billion coming from the general fund, and another 100 billion from fees and fines, compared to $34 million that the Bureau of Contract Administration currently receives to enforce workers' rights in the workplace. That's a robust 100-to-1 spending formula. It's imperative that you find the money to fully support the law, to support the Office of Labor standards and enforcement. The LA workers are depending on our city leaders to ensure that employers don't violate our rights as workers. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Price and city council members. My name is Kenneth Spencer. I live in LA, and I've been employed for two years. I'm a father and member of the L.A. Black Workers Center. 18% of blacks in LA County have no jobs. 30% make less than $12 an hour. Therefore, the Black Workers Center and I support the 1525 an hour and enforcement. There is a major black job crisis in the city of Los Angeles. It can be fixed. It's not rocket science. It should include anti-discrimination enforcement in the OLSA. Look at your workforces. Does it represent your diverse city? No, it doesn't. I'm registered myself with three work source centers. I have maybe four job developers and countless interviews despite 30 years of work experience, and I am unable to find work. When I was working, it was low wage, and my employer stole some of my wages. We want employees to stop excluding LA's most vulnerable people from jobs and address racial discrimination in hiring practice. LA must work for everyone. Raise and enforce 1525 an hour. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave Sanders, Sheharyar Kuji, Andrew Moss, Celine Perez, Elena Pop.
Hello, my name is David Sanders. I'm here representing Bob Schoonover, President of SEI Local 721, and also on behalf of our 85,000 working family members that we represent also. You know, when the headline screams homelessness is up 12%, we know you want to be bold on increasing the minimum wage to $15 an hour. We are here, Fix LA, to help. Help you so you don't feel hamstrung by certain outsider entities that want to give you pause, maybe. Because we know that poverty is bad for business. We know lower wages means more government handouts. And taxpayers are tired of picking up the cost for profitable businesses, those that can afford to do so. You know, what's good for Seattle is good for LA. We know now the governor of New York, Mayor Cuomo, has now figured out how to raise the minimum wage in the city of New York. We think that half a decade timeline will only result in LA lagging behind in other cities. And we urge you, urge you, to move forward on the increase in minimum wage to $15. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sheharyar Kostya with the Los Angeles Alliance for a New Economy. I'm here to speak about the 14,000 port truck drivers who do business at the Port of LA every day. A lot of those drivers are based at companies that are based outside of the city of Los Angeles, but every day they do business in the city of LA. We want to make sure that they're covered by this ordinance. Secondly, the Layne and the International Brotherhood of Teamsters Local 848 work every day with drivers at the port who are misclassified as independent contractors. These drivers, every day, move goods for us, but at the end of the day, they have to pay for the insurance, for the fuel, even for the maintenance of the trucks that their employers own. We want to make sure that there's a robust wage theft enforcement agency that can take on this issue of misclassification. This is an industry where the majority, 90% of these 14,000 drivers, are misclassified. Every time we bring this issue to the courts, every time a driver files a claim with the state, they're found to be misclassified. What this has led to is six strikes over the last 18 months among drivers who are facing misclassification and mistreatment by their employers. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Andrew Moss. I'm a lay member of CLU LA, Clergy and Laity United for Economic Justice. There was a reference earlier today to the housing crisis, the homelessness, the increase of homeless people in LA by 12%. And this is a crisis that's been exacerbated, caused in large measure because of a lack of affordable housing and depressed wages. It's indicative of a much bigger crisis, though. It's a crisis that really has to do with growing inequality, continuing inequality in our society, inequality that is really corroding our democratic society. This inequality is not inevitable. It's a matter of choice. It's a matter of policy. I support 1525, and I support enforcement. This is a way that you can make a change and turn back the tide that's occurring now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Elena Pop. I'm the Executive Director of a small nonprofit that is calling for 15 by 2017, and enforcement, and PEG to CPI. $28 an hour is what is needed to support an average two-bedroom unit in the city of Los Angeles. At this point, I want to call special attention to the proposal that was taken to each of your offices by the women who fasted for 15 days. That proposal asks for $15 an hour by 2017 for large companies and their franchise beneficiaries in the fast-food, retail, health care, and technology industries, industries that are not likely to leave the city because of this, and a phase-in based on the council's original proposal for other sectors. This is a very intelligent proposal, a very well-thought-out proposal, that will give immediate relief to key numbers of workers while at the same time addressing the concerns that have been raised regarding nonprofits and small businesses. Please meet with us. We really need time to explain the data and how we came to that conclusion. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our last five public speakers this time, Martha Sanchez, Flora Rodriguez, Rosemary Jenkins, Sheri Bell, Tut Hayes, and Ruth Sarnoff. Please come forward. You may begin.
Good afternoon. My name is Martha Sanchez. I was one of the women who fasted for $15 wage, and I'm an ACE member. I know many of you already got the message and understand. But when I hear about the timeline that is being considered to get $15, I feel really discouraged because it seems that some of you are more sympathetic with the owners of restaurants than corporations than their workers. I have been here to testify almost every week, and every time I get emotional because I have to recall my childhood, being hungry at school, and have to remember what it means to grow alone at home because your mom cannot get enough money to sustain their family. It turns really embarrassing to me to tell the public that my husband earns $30 per hour and it's not enough to support our family. It's really hard for me to tell everybody that the only reason why we can't pay the mortgage, it is because we are three families sharing the same home. Yes, we are 20 people sharing the same space. We, the Women Fester of South Los Angeles Community and ACE Members, urge you to take on McDonald's and Walmart and make them pay $15 by 2017. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Rosemary Jenkins. I want to assuage some of the apprehensions of the small businesses in LA. I was recently speaking at a county supervisory meeting last week on the very same wage issue. And one of the small business owners mentioned to me that if the city could have free workshops to teach small business owners and managers how to run a business efficiently, they would be in a better position to pay their workers $15 an hour along with benefits. This very person owns a business, and he's been in a family business as well all his life. He starts out his workers at $15 an hour with all the fringe benefits. There is a person here speaking against the proposition, the proposal here, and he's starting his workers out at $18 an hour. And let me just finish with the fact that employers are not going to have more people work for them than they need. So this idea that they're going to lay off people because of the additional wages, if they work properly, if they manage their businesses properly, this won't have to happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Flora Rodriguez, and I'm an organizer with the Clean Car Wash Campaign. I'm here to voice the voice of the many workers, car wash workers, that couldn't be here today. I cannot mention how many workers have came through our doors to talk about their tips being stolen, or they're having to share their tips, not only amongst their other coworkers, but amongst managers and even the owners of the car wash. So I am here to urge you to raise the minimum wage to $15 an hour with enforcement, but I'm also here to remind you that there's many workers who are getting their wages stolen. Yes, taking their tips, that is considered wage theft. I'm here to urge you to support 15 with enforcement, with no exceptions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Sheri Bell, and I'm here in support of raising and enforcing $15 an hour. As a community organizer with the Los Angeles Black Workers Center, I hear the reality of exclusion on a daily basis. Black workers only comprise 2% of the hours' work in the construction industry in LA County, from Andre, a pre-apprenticeship graduate who arrived at work sites at 5:00 AM for two years, only to be turned away, from Gary, happy to get a new job, but saddened to only see three black workers out of a site with almost 200 workers. In a University of Chicago study, job applicants with black-sounding names were 50% less likely to be called back in the hiring process. In order to lift all Angelenos out of poverty, we need real protections for equal access, income equity, and systemic exclusion in this city. To not invest in anti-discrimination enforcement is to invest in the detriment and suffering of all the families working Angelenos in this city. Justice delayed is justice denied. So raise and enforce 15. Thank you.
Thank you.
Larry Manil asked Keke Corian, "Why would you consider paying underage workers less than anyone else, even though they're doing the same work?" Keke Corian said, "We have to consider everything." Well, why not consider child labor? Get 10-year-olds to work. Why not consider outright slavery? These people make $184,000 a year. What mindset do you think they have? They will do premeditated murder, put a train on the ground, and make people cross the tracks, drive across the tracks, and they know that will kill them. But of course, it costs a lot of money to making a subway. You see, they are very cheap when it comes to human suffering. They're very economical when it comes to destroying the people they work for, but they will not consider getting a minimum wage of $15 an hour.
My name is Ruth Sarnoff. I think it's time to consider taxing the wealth of the 1%. In 1944, the tax rate was 94% on the 1%. It didn't go into the '50s and '40s and down into the '30s until the '70s and the '80s and the '90s. And during that period, through redlining, a whole generation of black and brown people in this city were out of the loop for college, for housing, and a number of things. And they are still being greenlined right now with all of the dirtiest industries in the city. I urge you to look at why, as well as what, we are facing in this city now, and correct it, and be courageous. Just be courageous for one moment and say something back about why Just be courageous for one moment and say something back about why you think they don't deserve this, and they need to have it fast-tracked. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our public comment. We are going to adjourn to closed session. We'll take that session in the back. So if you will just be patient, we shall return. Okay? Just for clarification, it's recessed the closed session. This is recessed. Correct. The meeting of the Economic Development Committee. Appreciate your presence and your patience. I'd like to thank everyone for your participation and engagement in this evening's meeting. Being a son of a working-class parents, born and raised in South LA, going to public service, I knew that my focus had to be on advocating for an improved quality of life for my community and representing the needs of people like my parents. I can think of, I can't think of a better way to lead than to serve those families than to put forward a historic minimum wage policy for our city. I was honored to join my colleagues, council members Nury Martinez and Mike Bonin and Gil Sadio, on a motion calling for higher wages citywide. Their leadership and counsel on this issue has been invaluable. The road has been long, but I think we have a lot to be proud of. In particular, I think the inclusive discussion process that we have had to debate this issue has given the public an unprecedented amount of deliberation and input into this policy formulation. We commissioned three studies on the issue, had a robust peer review of all the literature. We held seven committee meetings to discuss this policy change. In the course of four community hearings from Watts to West LA, we heard more than 600 community members comment. It was incredibly powerful to see that kind of civic engagement. I think it speaks to the magnitude of what's before us. Fifty years ago, the nation's civil rights leaders fought to establish a minimum wage that ensured a basic standard living for all workers, no matter what their occupation or level of education. The narrative then was that too many citizens, primarily people of color, were working some of our toughest jobs but being paid barely enough to survive on. These were nannies and janitors, housekeepers, home care workers, cooks, drivers. Sadly, we find ourselves today facing many of these same issues. As it stands today, a minimum wage worker would need to work almost two and a half jobs to afford the rent on an average apartment. We know that as we continue to creep out of the Great Depression, jobs have been added to our economy, but wages have shrank. We know this disproportionately impacts people of color living in communities like South LA, Panorama City, Boyle Heights, Pico Union, Watts, and Wilmington. We know that more than a third of those workers making a minimum wage are also parents. We know that those children could be healthier and perform better in school if their parents were lifted out of poverty. I'm a former small business owner. I owned a printing business, a quick print shop with five employees, including myself. And so I know and appreciate the struggle that entrepreneurs have. During my time in the legislature, I was an advocate for small businesses. And I've heard the concerns raised by the business community and want to make sure that we are responsive to this community without watering down this critically needed policy. We heard the concerns raised by nonprofits and understand how difficult it can be to be flexible when you are tied to inflexible government funding. And we value the work that these groups do. And we weigh the importance of our nonprofit community to lead us as we work towards the common goal of improving the lives of everyday Angelinos. We also knew that we needed to make sure that wages continued to keep pace with rising costs and that we had adequate ways to enforce those wages. For all of these reasons, I would like to recommend that the city attorney be requested to prepare and present an ordinance to establish a citywide minimum wage with the following provisions. Beginning in 2016, the minimum wage in the city of Los Angeles will increase annually as follows. January, July 1, 2016, to $10.50. July 1, 2017, to $12. July 1 through 18, $13.25. July 1 through, July 1, 2019, to $14.25. July 1, 2020, $15. How we define small businesses has been an important part of our debate, and I'd like to allow my colleague, Vice Chair Keke Corian, to speak on this issue since he's been very involved in discussing this component. Mr. Keke Corian.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Let me just reiterate again, first of all, how much I think we all owe a debt of gratitude to you and your leadership in this committee for creating a process by which every stakeholder in the city has had a voice in the development of this policy. We've had very robust discussions, four public meetings around the city, as well as extensive meetings that we've had here. We've heard hundreds of members of the public come to the microphone and provide comment, low-wage workers, business owners, and every other kind of imaginable stakeholder. So this has really been a thorough discussion, and I appreciate that. The three economic reports that we had and the peer review really give us a lot of information upon which to base a sound and sustainable policy. And I think one of the takeaways that I gathered from the economic analysis, which is consistent with, I think, what all of us probably feel in our gut, is that the quicker and larger the increase in the minimum wage, the harder it is to predict adverse impacts that might result to that for working people, cutbacks in hours and so on. And I think that those adverse impacts are especially pronounced when it comes to small businesses that have less ability to absorb those costs than Walmart does, say. So I appreciate having that discussion with you, Mr. Chairman, and there's different ways we can do this. Seattle obviously has a small business provision that includes a deferred implementation for businesses under 500 employees. I think that's too high, but I do think that the concept of a slower implementation makes a great deal of sense for small businesses. And so I would suggest that in addition to the time schedule that you've described, that for businesses with 25 or fewer employers, employees, they be allowed an additional year to phase in the city's minimum wage so that they can help to absorb some of those costs and create different pricing structures and so on. So that for a small employer of under 25, of 25 or fewer employees, the $10.50 raise would go in effect on July 1 of 2017 rather than 16. And for each succeeding year, there's a year of delay. So July 1 of 2018, $12. July 1 of 19, $13.25. July 1 of 2020, $14.25. And then even the small employers get to that $15 mark on July 1 of 2021. And then both small and large employers would at that point be together at that $15 mark.
Thank you. In regards to nonprofits, the recommendation is that they should receive the same modified schedule if they have 25 or fewer employees. Or alternatively, they can apply for a waiver through the Bureau of Contract Administration if their top executive earns less than the eight times the wage of the lowest-paid worker and they meet the following criteria. One, they serve transitional employees, or they are primarily funded by state or federal reimbursements that are more than 50 percent of their payroll. Beginning in July 1, 2022, the minimum wage will increase annually based on the average CPI over the previous 20 years, Consumer Price Index over the previous 20 years. This rate will be established by the BCA and announced on July, on January 1 of every year. In regards to a youth wage, we should stay consistent with state law, which is 85 percent of the minimum wage for 160 hours for workers 14 through 17 years of age. In regards to paid time off, we should develop policies that stay consistent with previous city wage policies. And it should be consistent with the city hotel minimum wage regarding service charges. We should stay consistent with the city minimum wage regarding service charges. Furthermore, I'd like to thank council members Blumenfeld and Keke Corian for bringing up the need to monitor the minimum wage. And I would recommend that we instruct the CLA and CAO to commission a study every three years of the minimum wage implementation, starting in 2018, to review the state of the city's economy, impacts of the minimum wage, and wage theft enforcement, and to collect economic data, including jobs, earnings, and sales tax on an annual basis. I'd like to thank council members Sadio and Corretz for championing the issue of enforcement and to put an end to wage theft and anti-discrimination practices in the city. The minimum wage enforcement recommendations made by the committee last week will come to the full council along with this item next week. Finally, before closing, I'd like to give special thanks to my colleagues, council members Martinez and Bonin. And Mike is not on the committee, but he was in, he was present for all the hearings, and I see him today. Instrumental and present. The three of us stood together almost a year ago calling for raising the minimum wage for hotel workers. And we said back then that this would be the first steps toward raising wages for all. And so again, I'm proud to stand with you again to enact this historic piece of legislation. Colleagues, si se puede. I'd, I'll entertain a second to that motion.
I second.
It's been seconded that we so instruct the city attorney. Is there any discussion, members? Seeing no discussion, that will, I'm sorry. Mr. Sadio.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, let me congratulate you. This is no modest matter. This is perhaps the greatest shift of wealth in the history of this city. In fact, I would argue that it is perhaps the greatest shift of wealth in the history of this city. This country has been devastated in an incredible recession coming out of '07 and '08, and this is one way in which we try to address the continuing and growing divide between wealth and poverty in this nation. And so I want to commend you for your stewardship and your leadership in doing this. We have a housing crisis. We have a homeless crisis. We have tremendous challenges that are part of the economy here, and this is an extraordinary effort on our behalf, on our collective behalf. And so I want to commend you for your leadership. I want to support the motion, although I do want to take one second off to talk about a particular group of people. And those are those young men and women you saw come up today, who are involved in training programs. In other words, they're not working, they're trainings. And they are in situations where they are trying to rebuild their lives. They need a second chance. And I want to give that second chance to all of them. I don't want to have anybody having to make a choice, but somebody who comes out of incarceration, who wants to turn their life around, who needs additional training, I shared this earlier with the president, this was my initial work out of college job training. I want to give them that opportunity to learn the life skills that they should have learned but haven't. This is an opportunity for them to move forward. And I think those particular programs that came up before us this morning, earlier in the afternoon, Homeboy Industries, with their stellar record of redemption and reclaiming lives, Crissalis with their incredible work with the Chronic Homeless and the Conservation Corps, their incredible work of really giving a first chance to many people to enter the workforce. We have to consider that, and we have to consider and distinguish that and their training programs from the other work that these young people, young men and women, will be able to do later. And so I want to amend that as a friendly amendment, that we give them an exemption for their programs. They take 18 months to do that across the board, and that we give them an exemption in this great and grand scheme that will shift many people out of poverty and move them towards the middle class, move them solidly as the working class, move them forward into the mainstream of our economy. But let's make sure that we do so without leaving anybody behind. And so I offer that as a friendly amendment and as a commendation for your great leadership on this incredible initiative.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio. We certainly appreciate your comments and your ongoing leadership on this issue. We certainly have attempted to address that by making these organizations eligible for a waiver. And I think that, of course, this is not the end of the discussion. You know, we're going to be bringing this back. And I would choose not to consider it at this time, but certainly we'll keep it as a part of the, those issues that we want to resolve. Is there a, we had a second to the motion. Is there any more discussion?
Actually, Mr. Corretz.
Mr. Corretz, comment?
I will say something. All right. I just, for clarification, Mr. Chairman, we did talk about having the city attorney work on an ordinance that would have consistency with regard to certain provisions with the hotel ordinance and also the living wage ordinance. I would just note that consistency does not mean identi, that it needs to be identical, that we, that ordinances serve different purposes, and being consistent may or may not mean being exactly the same. And that's a discussion that the council will need to have when this moves forward. But I do just want to say, kind of in summary of all this, because we just threw out a lot of numbers and a lot of years. Let's be clear on this, to Mr. Sadio's point. Every employee in the city of Los Angeles under this ordinance will receive more than a, every minimum wage employee will see more than a 50 percent pay increase in the next six years under this proposal. 50 percent pay increase, more than 50 percent pay increase. And yet, at the same time, with the differential treatment that we're providing for small businesses, 89 percent of businesses will get an additional year to be able to implement that. So I think this approach really strikes a balance between maximizing the benefit for the largest number of working people, low-wage working people, and also enabling the largest number of businesses to be able to absorb these costs and avoid layoffs, reduction in hours, reduction in benefits, and so on. And so I want to, again, repeat my congratulations to you, Mr. Chairman, and to all of my colleagues in developing a very good, sustainable, balanced policy.
Any other comments? Okay, so I will, there's a motion on the floor to make certain recommendations to the city attorney as previously discussed. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion carries. Thank you. President Wesson.
I think that it's very important to, for me to say that I gave this committee a very difficult task. And I want to commend you and every member, every member on this committee for all of the hard work and the collaborative way that we all worked to put this together. So what you've done and the members of this committee, this is dramatic. This is huge, and I want to thank you for that. I want to thank the Bonins again, and I feel compelled to do this because, maybe because I am the president, but I want to thank Mr. Bonin. And I want to thank Mr. O'Farrell and Mr. Fuentes and Mr. Blumenfield and all of the people that sent notes and gave their opinions and attended the hearings that you had. This is a tough job, but it was well done. But I think that this would not have occurred if we didn't give our individual staffs a thank you, because they are thank you, because they are the glue that keeps this building together, and they all worked hard. Our CLA and our CAO and their staffs were phenomenal. Everyone that engaged, those supportive or those against, we want to thank them for all of their input. And the last thing that I'll say that I've learned from being on this committee is that there is a divide that we need to work on so that we can bring business closer with the workers and workers closer to business. If you didn't have workers, you wouldn't have business. If you didn't have business, you wouldn't have workers. So I think that a challenge that we have is to try to strengthen that relationship. And I'm committed to work with you and the other members to try to make that happen. And again, you got to talk about our mayor, okay? Mr. Bonin, and I think you and Ms. Martinez were planning some kind of citywide, you know, increase. The mayor kind of plowed the field, made it easier. I mean, he brought folk together and indicated that we need to make this happen. And I think because of the mayor's statement and because of the great relationship that this council and this president has with the mayor, that you see the fruit of our labor. So, Mr. Mayor, I know you're busy, probably not listening, but this council and this committee wants to thank you for partnering, being a major partner in making this occur. Good work, Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Price, I don't want to be remiss in really thanking a very, very special woman who I believe did an amazing job going out and putting the peer review together, and that's our CLA. Sharon Stok, can you please stand up?
Absolutely.
You know, this is a woman who I said from the very beginning when she got appointed was going to do an amazing job, and you have, Sharon. I think it's thanks to you and your leadership and your CLA's office that we had a very good report peer review that was brought back to this council, even though you were criticized. And I stood by you, and I knew you were going to do a good job. So thank you so much for leading us in this direction. You did an amazing job. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I too want to just thank everybody for the real collaboration, real collaborative effort, certainly the leadership of our mayor, who set the tone early, my colleagues on the committee, members on the council, our individual staffs, staff of CLA and CAO and others, all worked toward one goal, and that was coming up with the kind of information that would help us make the kinds of policy decisions that are so very, very important. And so I just want to thank everyone for their cooperative spirit. And special thanks to the council president for assigning this important task to the Economic Development Committee. Mr. President, we appreciate your confidence in our abilities and want you to know that we are going to continue being partners with you and our colleagues on the council as we move very positive, progressive policy and programs forward that benefit the citizens of our community. And so, members, if there are no other comments, Mr. Rizar.
Mr. Chair, this is a very important step for the city and for the direction of the city. And it is this long-term planning that I think will help us all move forward together, no matter who you are, where you come from in the city. And just briefly, again, I know a lot of thank yous have gone around, but thank you again, Mr. Chair, for your leadership in this and having and hosting the meetings throughout the city to be inclusive and getting us to this point. Making a major policy change like this one is not an easy task. Yourself, along with our council president, the vice chair, and our mayor setting the tone about the direction we're going to take helped us get to this point. So thank you for your leadership in this, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And it certainly is not over. Obviously, this mayor will be coming back to council. And as we've suggested, there's going to be ongoing evaluation, review, monitoring of this process. So it's not going to be on autopilot and then just see whatever happens. We're going to be intentionally observing, giving it a chance to work, but observing it and tweaking it as it's required. Okay? So if there's no other business before us at this time, this meeting is adjourned.